County Board of County Commissioners, special meeting. This is a work session. A lot of special meetings, work sessions. This is an opportunity for the commissioners to work with each other, with Carl Holm and his staff regarding our land use code today. We have a hard stop right at 2:00. Commissioner Supas has some previous engagements he needs to attend to. We're going to start by turning this over to Mr. Holm. If you've got a presentation, you just want to make sure things update.
Well, that's up to you, Mr. Chair. So just kind of make sure we're all tracking here. I've put together a red line version based on what I understood the direction of your board on March 1st following the public hearing. The 2022 certified copy update was rejected. So this is effectively a restart. However, the red line does reflect work that was done through 2022 up to and including your work session on Monday, the 27th. It does also include some notes that I had received from Commissioner Supas on the 2021 plan. It wasn't on this or any other version. I tried to reflect those correctly. Hopefully, I got them all right, but I apologize if I didn't. You know, so the idea is to go through. Are there things you want to keep? Are there things you want to delete? Do you want to add? You know, we also have received comments about specific changes from citizens from healthy communities that just came in today, families that I saw, changes relative to climate action. And Delta County Coalition has submitted some specific changes that they'd want to see. Those are not reflected in here. So, you know, how you want to go through that? I haven't aligned those comments yet with this, with this version. But effectively, what we need to do is go through to get to a version that your board is ready to send to the planning commission. The planning commission will have 30 days to report back. Then it will be a two-week timeframe, a minimum of two-week timeframe prior to your board having a public hearing on that document. Looked at Mr. Bear, if I captured that. If there's anything else. There was one other change that I did miss. Mr. Bear brought to my attention. He had recommended a change in Chapter 13, which is effectively Page 217 and 18, regarding the non-liability of deleting that first sentence that's in there. But so that, when we can cross that when we get there, but I just wanted to let you know that I am aware of one, one thing that I missed, so.
There was some discussion about that at the previous work sessions.
So with that, it's up to you how you want to go about this. If you wanted to start from page one, Chapter one. If you want to bring forward comments or changes, or do you want to just work through page by page? We have the electronic version on the screen.
Let's go page by page so we don't miss anything. If you want to set the expectation that this won't be the only work session we have with us, so we take our time, get this right.
Okay. So the first page is the cover page. We've added reference to the planning commissioners and county commissioners board that are in effect at this time.
Well, on page two, or even on page three, I'd like to add a foreword to this. And this is something that would be authored by the commissioners. And I heard loud and clear, we are not doing, I am not doing a good job explaining why and the purpose of land use codes.
I think that would align with a comment that I saw from Commissioner Supas about having an executive summary and a flow chart. So kind of something along those lines.
There, I think all three are warranted here.
Okay.
But this would be very big.
If we actually had the table of contents, I just reflected it here.
Short history of how we got to here. Again, the purpose and benefits of having a land use code. General, I'll take a stab at that and start circulating that around. Go ahead, Carl.
So there are, the table of contents that's in here is reflective of how it's been amended, but that's going to, that potentially could change. So I don't know if I want to spend a lot of time on, or any time on the table of contents at this point.
I don't see any of those. So Carl, are you going to develop an executive summary, a flow chart, when we finish the review?
I can, I can do that, yes, sir. And from a flow chart perspective, the, the review process, there's, there's kind of effectively two flow charts. So we've been, we've been looking, this is, we've been looking at the permit database program, kind of one for subdivision or, you know, those types of projects versus your land use type projects. If that's what you're thinking of from a flow chart, is that?
It, it just needs to be clear how the application process goes. And I, I kind of seen it as, as that we can fit the review process in that chart. So, you know, yes, yes, pass Planning Commission. Go on here. No, go to here.
Right.
It was kind of a multi-purpose flow chart is what I was hoping for.
Kind of allow my rank go to the end.
Right.
Well, it kind of starts with if it's allowed, it's just, it's over here. If it's a site plan review, there's this piece. If there's a limited use, it's administrative, so it's this piece. And then conditionally used, Planning Commission and Board kind of thing. Same with, similar with the subdivisions. If it's a, something like a minor plat or a re-plat or bounty line that's administrative, it's kind of over here. Unless there's dedication, then it might come back to the board. But otherwise, it goes to the Planning Commission whenever finished with the board for a preliminary plat. So that's why I said it kind of goes two different processes. So that would be the chart. Okay. Is that, is that what you're thinking, kind of?
Yeah, we just got to find a simplified way to.
We, well, I'll take a shot at it and then we can, we can feed it up to me. Okay, so I guess maybe the appendices we want to just talk about. We've added a section that's in Chapter four relative to street plans. So the 35 acre road resolution does not need to be an appendancy. Similarly, the wireless communication facility resolution that had been appendicized is now incorporated into Chapter two. So that could be deleted. And then the design and installation guidelines or underground irrigation water conveyance was never adopted. So we would take that out as well. There is the, some ordinances that could be included just so that everything is referenced together. The commercial cannabis ordinance, pre-head mobile home ordinance, and then the two overlay districts, Highway 50 and Highway 92. Now, if they, if they are repealed or changed at some later, or repealed at some later time, then they would, could be deleted out of here. But at that, at this point, those are the, those are kind of land use-related ordinances that come up as we're, as we're working with.
They're still, they're still in effect until.
They're still in effect until they're not, yeah.
But specifically, the 35 acre and the wireless are integrated into this document.
Correct.
So, so I think the same resolution, if this, if this was adopted, would. They're both resolutions.
Those are.
Well, wireless was never adopted.
Wireless was never adopted, so there's nothing to do there. 35 acre resolution would need to be repealed. What's also not listed on here is the development application ordinance. Because effectively, it has been integrated into land use code and could be repealed as, as well. And so it's not listed here.
Would you add that as a strike through so when we go through this again?
We could do that, yeah.
So, Chair, just, just so that's clear. That's an ordinance, so that would have to go through a repeal of an ordinance procedure, which has just been taken care of and cleaned up on the back end once this is done. That's different than repealing a resolution, which can just be done at the same time.
At the same time, with, with the resolution approving the land use code, like, kind of like what was done last time for specific development and subdivision. Okay, so page 17, Chapter one. There are some minor cleanup edits on that page. Under the purpose and intent, Section two.
And as we go through here, let's try to find, let's simplify, provide easier language that doesn't, doesn't confuse it.
Kate, can you increase the size a little? Or do you want to look at the screens?
Trying to avoid saying legally is there, John?
Oh, I didn't know I was supposed to take offense. I missed that.
Okay, are you offended?
Plain language is always good.
Very good.
There are any changes to this, page 17? Do you want me to go through each one, or?
No, is there any questions on page 17, commissioners?
No.
Kick it off, Carl.
Okay. Page 18, there is one change there, again, a cleanup item in subsection three, permits issued in conflict with code. Page 19, there's one deletion there. Changing it from, or denial of approval, just to denial. Page 20, subsection B, effects on approvals that predate the effective date. Again, there's some cleanup language, but I think the area for discussion is subsection five, approvals that are abandoned. The, the red line strikeout referred to the January 5th, 2021, because that's when this first went into effect. And there was suggestion as far as just changing the, the 12 months to 24 months. And so then it would read, development previously approved by development agreement that have not begun. The use approved for within 24 months of this code shall be considered abandoned, et cetera.
Well, this is the, I mean, this is the transitional section here. So it's merely talking about the transition from one code to the other, so. When I was reading through this the first time, I was contemplating more of a long-term number, you know, of, you know, I'm thinking about other development agreements that, you know, somebody wasn't able to get going because it took them longer to get financing, it took them longer to get something that's going. But being the transitional part of it, I don't know if that's necessary. How many, how many applications do we have out there that haven't, haven't started, you know?
At this point, there, this is referring, I think, to, to approvals prior to the 2021 adoption. There's some specific development applications that I think probably have not started. I'm lucky Kate is even working.
I mean, we went through.
The subdivisions, I think, have been cleaned up for the most part.
So, so, you know, perhaps, perhaps we need to have some language in there, you know, giving a timeframe, but yet giving some, some flexibility for extension if, you know, due to other circumstances. You know what I mean? We, we, there's other things going on out there.
Supply chain.
Supply chain, inflation, just general economic problems that I don't know that we want to be too restrictive on. Make sure we give, give people a chance to get their project done.
Kind of hardship.
Yeah, some hardship clause in here.
Okay, we'll play that and then come back to.
Okay.
And then on page 21, there's one, one cleanup item there. It referred to a development agreement, but not all the specific developments have development agreements. So we just put document, whatever the document might be. It might be a resolution, it might only be minutes. That's all we've been finding. Page 22, under subsection three, the addition of, of water rights in the parent article in item, sub-item A. Couple of cleanup items. Page 23, Section four, effective date of repealer. Large partial that was struck out because it already took effect when the 2021 code was done. And there's some other cleanup items there. Until we get down to Section five B, exemptions from approval requirement, it kind of goes from page 23 to page 24. Here, we were wanting to just clean this up a little bit, to be clear. Thinking about how people take the word exempt. And, because some of the things that were listed on here, and we did add, you know, show that the home business exemption that was in there had been taken out when we put that back in. This was a comment from, from Commissioner Supas's comments. It was taken out because it was a allowed use. You know, so we want to consider that. And there's all, there's all sorts of other allowed uses, agriculture and other things. So we took it out of here because it was already addressed in another place in the code. But it was here and it doesn't hurt anything to have it here. But I do want to make sure that then if we do that, that we cross-reference where there are the standards for the home businesses in Chapter two. Before, the standards were actually the definitions. And that, a lot of people missed that. They, they saw the exemption here and didn't go to the definition to see that there were actually some, some standards within the definition of accessory business use of the home.
You guys are right, moving to the screens. I'm still. So basically, you kept it the same, you just changed that you're citing.
Changed it from accessory business to the home-to-home business, which is the new title. And then where that section is found.
Chapter two, Section three.
Yes. Now, it's similar with the parent article on subdivisions is where the subdivision regulations are now. Because that does include a list of, of types of divisions of land that are exempt, either statute or, or other, just parroquia.
I don't know if you're ready to move on, or?
Go ahead. Mike, your favor.
Do you?
Okay. Then on page 25, change relative to subsection B under the Board of County Commissioners. Just some cleanup language there.
I've got one comment on 24.
On 24, which?
Page 23.
Okay. Which part?
6A1.
Oh, generally.
The director shall be selected by the Delta County, Board of County Commissioners. That's not technically the case. I mean, that's typically the position that's hired by the administrator. So why do we strike out administrator? The original language.
The original is that the director shall be selected by the Delta, by the county administrator. The county administrator may appoint himself or herself as the director. I understood your edit to be that it would just say the director shall be selected by Delta County.
We just put Delta County. We didn't necessarily specify commissioners or anything like that. So that was.
Why is that?
Because commissioners don't, there's only three positions the commissioners appoint in the county. Director of planning is not allowed.
Yeah, I really think it needs to say administrator. We need to be specific there.
And then leave it as is?
Yeah.
Okay. Anything else on page 24?
Okay.
Thank you. Sorry, I skipped over that one. Page 25, subsection B, regarding the rezoning and tax amendments. So this was just meant to be a cleanup of that.
And I, I've talked about that, we talked about that just because it was the, the language is easier to read this way than the other way. Just one of those simplification of changes.
Okay.
Well, hold on.
I don't want to know if that's even necessary to have that. What it's doing is it's paraphrasing a portion of that statute, but not the entirety of the statute.
We don't need it, let's get rid of it.
I don't, I don't, I don't think you need it at all. It's all in statute.
I was just trying to work with what we started.
No, then get rid of it. If it doesn't need to be there, get rid of it.
Because it's also only a portion of that statute.
Right.
I recommend just getting rid of that.
All right.
Just put an X through it and JB beside it, so now we know.
Okay.
Why JB, I'm getting blamed for everything else.
As you wish.
Moving on to page 26. Subsection E, as far as appointing an associate member to the Board of Adjustments. There's a recommendation that there would be one associate member from the Planning Commission.
And, and I, I'm very opposed to that because how do you have no ex parte communication if you have a planning commission member that's going to oversee an appeal? So I, I truly am just, just generally opposed to that in principle.
Okay, I, from an ex parte perspective, I'm not sure because the, they're two kind of separate. The Board of Adjustments would hear an appeal with the director, then that would go to the Board of County Commissioners. Board of Adjustment hears the variance, and if somebody doesn't like it, it goes to the Board of County Commissioners. The only reason that there would be a connection between the Board of Adjustments and the Planning Commission is if there was a preliminary plat that included a variance that went to the Board of Adjustment for the variance, then went to the Planning Commission, and then to your board for the preliminary plat. So because that.
That's still, yeah. Still, you're giving, that person's giving information outside of a, a public hearing that things may change on an application. And I, I just don't, I don't think that's right.
Subsection A does still say that, that no more than half of the members of the Board of Adjustment may at any time be members of the Planning Commission. And I, I said, you wanted to leave that.
I think we get rid of that language also.
That comes out of statute.
I was going to say, remind me, Carl, it's been a long time since I looked at. I think that there is some similar language to that in statute. Doesn't mean you have to.
Right.
But it's permissive, it's permissive. If the board's opinion is, is to not allow that, then that's fine. Then you definitely need to strike that, where it in E.
Yeah. Okay, so strike that, and then, but then also in subsection A, that second sentence?
Yep, yes. And it's perception as much as anything. Go ahead, Carl.
Okay. So the next part, powers and duties, this is relative to the Board of Adjustments. We added language that just identified the types of things that the Board of Adjustments is, is handling. Again, as I mentioned, appeals of a determination or decision made administratively are also, are variances as well. We did add here in subsection B, under the variances, the roadway design and construction standards. This came up once or twice, actually a couple of times, where the road standards themselves don't have a variance process, but they are referenced in the land use code. So putting it here and making it clear with the Board of Adjustments that there is, if somebody that wants to vary from one of the standards in the, the road, the road standards, they could go to the Board of Adjustment.
Don, did you pick up on that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm good with that.
Okay. There is anything else on page 26, going to page 27? The voting requirement, I don't know if you've had a chance to, to look at this part yet, but one thing that, that has come up a couple of times at the Board of Adjustments is, it's, it's a three-member board. And where the language was it required a unanimous approval, there have been times when there's only two people. So we have a quorum to have a meeting. But if, if, if a project requires three out of three and we only have two, do we have to continue that item? We've been operating where there's two, two members there. It's unanimous vote, and therefore, we've been handling projects that way to, to not have to keep continuing items. And so we were trying to have language here that basically made that clear that that was the case. And then the second item, the four members of a five-member Board of Judgment. Since it's been determined that it's a three-member board, I don't know if we still need subsection B there.
And strike that.
I don't know, I, I don't know, Carl, that I fully understand what the issue is, but I'm happy to look at that.
Okay.
You're talking about four A.
Yes.
Why does it call for a unanimous vote?
Well, that was, I think that's language came, comes from statute and was put into the land use code in that, in that matter. You know, the, it's, it's obviously not a unanimous vote if it's a five-member board. It's four out of five. It, it is a super majority, you know, to have four out of five. So it's, it's establishing a higher threshold for, for approving a variance or an appeal.
So the issue, sorry, I'm just, you know, you just said this, but I, I got the information. So you're saying there's times there's a quorum, there's two.
Right.
And, but to prove that, the way it reads, you need three. And so it's, in that sense, it is unique.
Yeah. So does it have to be three? In other words, if we have a quorum with only two, we can't hear the item? Because without, without a unanimous vote, it would be denied if it, if it had to be three.
I'll take a look at that.
Okay. Just trying to be.
And that's come up?
It has come up, yes. There is anything else on page 27? Moving to page 28. Listing the powers and duties of the Planning Commission. The yellow highlight adds language that was discussed on February 27th at the work session. Including reviewing and providing recommendations to the Board of County Commissioners on the following functions. Preliminary plats, conditional use permits, rezoning, land use code amendments, master plan. Plenary plats, conditional use permits, rezoning, land use code amendments, master plan. And so this is where we, you know, what we had talked about, plenary plats, potentially the Planning Commission being the decision-making body, but that's now been changed in this version, that they are remaining a recommending body to your Board. And then at the bottom, there was a reference to gifts and bequests that we're deleting just because that doesn't happen. That would conclude chapter one. Okay. Moving to chapter two. On page twenty-nine. The introductory part is meant to as a cleanup. And then we get into table two A. This is where we have the definitions of the zoning district, where there's been some refinement to A thirty-five, A twenty. Still maintaining that their, their primary purpose is for agricultural purposes. Including small-scale agriculture for the A five. Changing what had been residential two point five to agriculture two point five. Otherwise, that description is generally the same. And we added residential one acre to this table as well. Did some amendments to the rural, industrial, and commercial. I have a note there that this was a future consideration to split industrial and commercial use at some point. That wasn't something that the Planning Commission wanted to take on at this time. The urban growth area, rather than being a zoning district, would be an overlay. So where there is ample infrastructure, water, sewer, it could allow higher densities and, you know, larger scale developments. And then was adding the, the public, quasi-public designation. Basically reflects lands, so all the lands in the county would be zoned, which it is stated in the land use code. That was the intent. But so forests, VLM, parks, public safety facilities, public schools, utilities, those. Where those properties are owned by entities like that, it would, it would be zoned PTP.
So Carl, and maybe everybody already knows this, but in the UGA, those essentially would be overlaid of what is currently kind of in the IGAs, right? And so I guess the question is, is, does that do away for the need for IGA?
No. I mean, the IGA is still speaking to how, between the county and the town municipality, how we interact relative to land use matters. And we've been having conversations with them about where they're looking at, where they would provide services to water or sewer.
Right.
And that would be the growth management area. But it doesn't necessarily, it's not necessarily zoned one way or another. Right now, it was, it was all zoned UGA, which allowed smaller residential lots. But in some cases, they may like to see it zoned, rural, industrial, commercial. Based on how they envision their municipality growing. And so say it's residential one, and somebody comes in and they want to put a affordable housing project with, you know, higher density, you could put, we could put the UGA overlay on that. And, and then whatever many units, there really would be a limit of restriction of every unit other than water and sewer. Does that make sense?
Sure. A lot of moving parts there. And of course annexation is part of that, or future annexation or anything.
Right. Let's say the town didn't want to annex it, it's, right.
Well, we still need to delve into those IGAs.
Yes.
You know, that's something.
I kind of put it on the back burner until we, we settled where we are on this.
Add to the map of pages.
The maps go along with that, yes sir.
Mike, you got that?
Mm-hmm.
Anything else for table two A on the zoning districts? No. Let's get to the next section with fireworks again.
Page thirty-one. Updates to zoning map. Couple edits there. Okay, hearing none. There is anything else on page thirty-one? There are no changes on page thirty-two. So then we get to page thirty-three. Land used by zoning district, section two. And this is, this is a, an important part here that gives kind of that high-level purpose of the different designations, A being allowed, S being site plan review as edited in here. L for limited use, and C for conditional use. So how are you going to work through those? There is a yellow highlight in, under, for the site plan review relative to this code, because that was, that was changed at your work session on the twenty-seventh.
So, you know, we've delved into this pretty good on the twenty-seventh too, and we had conversations regarding this. And we're still, still falling back to some of the same original battles here. Single, single family attached, you know, I thought we were going back to an A classification on those. And I see they're back to an S on this.
I, if I missed that, I did remember that correction on the twenty-seventh. And that, that's table two B.
Right. Well, then that's, they all tie in here, you know, the descriptions and then the tables.
So change, single family detached to A.
Once again, I go back to the original argument. Just because it's allowed, doesn't mean you're allowed to do it illegally. So the semantics of an A versus an S are... I'm struggling, I'm still struggling with our twenty-sixteen.
Development application.
Site development is an ordinance.
Cause I would say that it would still, it would need site plan review, and that's hence the S.
Right.
For clarity of somebody reading this table.
Right. But it's mainly so that we confirm setbacks and existing easements.
And that, that's where we get, well, I mean, this is where the code starts. At relating, you get into chapter eight, and it speaks to what is site plan review. It's looking, as Commissioner Kuzis mentioned, setbacks. We look at, are there encumbrances? Are they building over easement or, or, you know, they have setbacks, but property might obviously not be building over property. They have access, they have water. They get an address assigned. And it's the things that were identified in the development application ordinance. Site plan review, access, address, septic.
And, and, you know, I'm just, I'm questioning. Number one, do we have the number of staff that needs to take this, this part on? You know, we're, we're behind on, on applications, it is. We've got, you know, what seems to be a, a major point of heartburn with a lot of the citizenry I talked to about, that some of the burdensome questions that are being asked in this process. I just, I'm, I'm not sure that the site planner is ready for primetime here yet, so.
Well, but maybe with, with burdensome questions, I know some people feel that asking them if they have water is, is burdensome.
Well, and that's, yeah, I'm not talking about that, you know, I'll, I'll be the first one to fight that battle. And I've fought it many times with people, you know. But if we didn't do a site plan review, called it allowed use by right, how do you confirm somebody's not building a hole over a pipeline, irrigation line? That's the flip side of this. How do we? How do we protect the other users that have the encumbrances, have the easements on that property? If some point in time, there's got to be responsibility of the property owner too. If that property owner doesn't do their due diligence, they don't make sure that they're doing it right. You know, it's, 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 that they're fault. I understand the desire to try to protect people from making their own mistakes. Like I said, I just, I just see, you know, I see issues that we're, we're creating issues out there because it's, it's going beyond just access boundaries easements. I mean, it's going into all kinds of other, other questions that were not met here. And that's my concern. So how do we confine the scope of something like that? I, I don't know either. I don't know either. But there's, there's got to be a happy medium there someplace.
And if there isn't site plan review, if there is a nation involving, you can come back to the county.
No.
They do come, for us, it's hard to resolve. We have, we have one person.
We end up, we end up resolving it, but it's a, it becomes a, it's a... Typically, what they do is they come back to us, want us to adjust a boundary line or adjust a flat, is what it comes down to. But it's still, they're the ones that end up, you know, paying for that mistake. And, and I'm, I'm not saying it's not necessarily the right thing to do. Maybe it's just a matter, we need to develop a better process, procedure in how we do it.
So how about some sort of a limited site plan review? And the Board could then define exactly what that is.
Well, that's what we get, that's what we're getting to in chapter eight, is identifying what is the site plan review.
What number, what page number, chapter eight? Let's go ahead and just, let's go there right now while we pull that Band-Aid, Don.
Page one fifty-two. So there you'll see in highlight, we included allowed uses, not including site plan review, but there's still access, address, septic. And then site plan review, there may be some uses that have use-specific standards in chapter two, so we reference that. Setbacks, encumbrances like easements and flat notes, water supply, wastewater disposal, and an access permit. That's the extent of the site plan review. So I think that's the main thing, is, is this isn't the way it was as a permitted use. This is very different now from, from what it was. Where it just referred to chapters three, four, or five. It included a lot of other things.
Can we swap out the word ministerial for administrative?
Sure. I mean, the, the thing there is the limited use is administrative, but it is discretionary. Meaning that it can be approved, conditionally approved, or denied. The difference with ministerial is if it meets the criteria, it's granting. There's no conditions, there's no denial.
You choose one of them.
Okay. I mean, we can, we.
I think just develop that language.
Yeah.
About the guilt.
That's right.
It's not a, a word that is commonly used. I think you just develop that language to say exactly what you just said. That it's automatic approval. I mean, I'm not stating chair, I'm just recommending, you know, just some, you know, some language that just explains that more specifically.
I think if somebody brings in a a site plan for the, showing the setbacks, encumbrances, water supply, and OWTS, and access permit, those, put it in the five things.
It, it's four unless, unless it falls under one of the, the use-specific standards like farm or housing or something like that. Cause then there are, there are additional standards in chapter two for certain uses like that.
I do think you need a split water supply and OWTS.
Okay.
Do you have anything else on that? Uh, let's, I'm, I'm, yeah, let's go back, let's go.
Go back to chapter two.
Go back to chapter two, let's fight through the chart, we'll.
So with that.
We'll come back to this.
Yeah, it's. And so this is where then, going back to page thirty-three. S means site plan review. These uses are allowed with review, as outlined in this code, chapter seven and eight. Approval of site plan shall be issued by the director after administrative review if the application is determined to be in compliance with the general requirements of this code. So, I mean, that, that is, I think, what ministerial is meaning to cover from chapter eight. So there's two ways to approach it. One, the definition, or to the table, or both.
Do we have any kind of a time limit in here on application? I don't see anything.
No, that was in a, an SOP that we did present to your Board. There were some time limits attached to the different types of levels of review, each, or each stage, I should say.
Under number one, allowed, I do think your statement, Don, that it is the responsibility of the landowner to make sure that these allowed use by rights, fences, carports, yada, yada. Meets the easement encumbrances and flat notes. Can you add a statement to that effect?
Okay.
Let's be very clear, it's their responsibility as a landowner. Well, it also says that, it says comply with that standard of code right at the top, so, but.
Add applicable encumbrances, easements, flat notes, et cetera. Under the strike, strike out. It doesn't specify setbacks, but it does mention the encumbrances. It doesn't specify setbacks, but it does mention the encumbrances.
So where do you want to go from here, Don, on the site plan review?
Let's, let's go ahead and, let's go and go through the charts, just make sure we got everything.
So there, within the chart, the changes that I picked up from the work session on the twenty-seventh, it's the assisted living, instead of being not permitted in A thirty-five, A twenty, and commercial, it would be a limited use. Automobile fueling and service station, certainly being a conditional use, in all but the commercial zone, where it would be site plan review. And then rather than listing out bed and breakfast, and lodging, and all that, based on the number of rentable rooms, zero to four, allowed use, five to ten, a limited use, except in commercial, where it'd be site plan review. More than ten rentable rooms would be limited use, in all but A thirty-five, where it'd be a conditional use. Now, we didn't get real into specific into, you know, limited, conditional, site plan review, but I did my best at what I thought your, your intent was there. And then also the truck stop, changing it from a not permitted to conditional use.
Carl, is there a way to add a header on each of these separate pages with the people in there?
We can work on that, that question's come up before, yeah. There'll be a lot of formatting, I think, once we get through everything, to get everything lined up, but we'll, we'll work on that.
We had, for mineral extraction quarry, it was conditional use all the way across, and now we show not allowed in a couple of these zones.
Right, in the, of the smaller, the A five, A two point five, residential one, we can, we can include that back in, but.
I mean, I can understand not doing it in the A two point five as residential one, but you've, you've still got some A five zones out there, they're big lock areas.
So, and then did your board want that to go back to conditional use?
I, I, I think they should, I think they should be conditional. We don't, you know, our zoning may not storm perfect, I think this should be conditional.
No, I found that. Because mineral extraction could be actually, somebody pulling some gravel for their own use.
Right.
Or, you know, super small scale gravel, fish pond or something, so.
So mineral extraction quarry, by definition, is a commercial facility, doesn't specify size, so. Commercial facility of all extraction of soluble materials, including, not limited to building stone, clay, coal, dicomatous earth, gravel, precious or semi-precious stones, or metals, or sand. Does not include oil or incandescent traction. Okay, so it'll go back to conditional?
Yeah.
Got five more minutes.
Okay. Sorry, folks, I know I.
That's why I was just keeping an eye on the company, so.
Issues, issues beyond my control, I apologize.
So let's try to get through, is there any other questions on the commercial land use category on the table two B? What about rural recreation hospitality? Let's get through that, and get us to this stopping point.
Actually, I looked at those earlier, I thought, I thought, did a pretty good job of covering what we discussed at our last meeting on that. I think that's pretty much, pretty much what we talked about right there, so. It gives us, I mean, it's pretty much, pretty much spot on, what we discussed. I see we added golf courses, too, I'm kind of curious to see how many golf course applications come in.
Well, I just split it off into parks and passive recreation, because it's not really passive.
No. Purely, purely.
Not that I expect applications.
We got a couple of minutes here, anything else under table two B then? Personal skill. We have too much, too much really discussed until we get to the temporary uses and sister business use of home, or the next step.
Well, and you'll notice with the table, the introduction, as well as the footnotes, were meant to help explain how the table works in relation to the codes. There's, there's definitions in chapter fourteen that go into more detail, as well as, there are some uses that we highlighted here that are the use specific standards, that there's some standards later in this chapter. So rather than just looking at the matrix by itself, there are, there's other pieces that go into that.
So gentlemen, looking at the calendar, what does March sixteenth, one o'clock, looks like for you guys? Lindsay, is there anything on our calendars that I missed?
CCRI.
When are you available then, Don? Let's look. Next Wednesday at one. Next Wednesday at one, Wednesday the fifteenth, we'll be at one thirty. One fifteen. That's what one wants.
So one, what did you say?
One thirty. Okay, can we schedule hour and a half?
Yep. Mr. Chair, how do you want me to kind of approach some of these things that we wanted to flag or go back to, do you want me to do some work on that?
That'll be the first part we cover next time.
We could, so we can kind of hopefully put that then behind and move on.
John said he's got some things he wants to look into, bring back to us.
And I, I, I'll be honest with you, I've had other things on my plate with, with projects, and I haven't had, haven't had time to give this thing full attention yet either, so hopefully by my end, I'll have a little better awareness of everything that's going on in there, so.
And how would you like to interject, like, some of the comments we're getting on suggested changes, like, as I mentioned, citizens from other communities, kind of coalition, individuals are sending, sending other comments?
I think.
Do you want to get through it and go back?
We're getting those emails, too, let's see if we can individually look at those, and then bring them back at our next meeting, have that discussion on some of those, too.
Okay.
And do note, if we go through something that there was a comment on, bring it to our attention again.
Okay.
You guys, I appreciate your attention to this.
Sorry, we had to take two.
Okay, we're done for today. Thank you, everybody, for being here.